Welcome to the
Mr. Remicon.
Welcome to the December 21st Business Meeting. And today, our Administrator, Don Crupp, is out and Deputy Administrator Laurel Butman is in, and I'm turning over to you for a roll.
Okay. First, I'd like to introduce, today we have sitting in from County Council, Attorney Chris Story, and our Clerk for the Board today is Kevin Moss, here at my side. So, roll call. Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
And Chair Bernard.
Here. And please, do we do him later?
Yeah.
Don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'd like to announce that we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item and introduce Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Because if three and three, we'd never get anything done, would we?
Yeah, right.
And ask Kevin to, I guess, please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under our Housing Authority Consent Agenda, in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2018.
That's it. Do any Commissioners want to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for that long trip up here to bend five seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. With that, we will now convene as the Housing, I mean, adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as Board of County Commissioners for the rest of the meeting. And we have, what's up next?
We have a presentation today about dog services. We have with us Christine Wallace, our Dog Services Manager, and also Sarah Holcomb, on staff to do the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much for having us here today. We are here to share some of our statistics from this year, and then followed by that, we have a fun story about
Are they not? How do you know?
We have a fun story about a dog and a person that was reunited by benefit of a microchip, and of course, our Dog of the Week. So, I will start with a graphic that shows some of our statistics from, well, to date through mid-December. So, January 1st through December 15th, these are some of our numbers. Some of them we're quite proud of. So, this year, so far, we've had 1,017 dogs come through our shelter. That is stray dogs. Those are dogs that are surrendered by owners that couldn't care for them anymore, and those are also dogs that were confiscated as part of hearings cases and stuff like that. Below that, you'll see that 75.8% of the stray dogs that came to our shelter were reunited with their owners. That is one of our top priorities at the shelter. Sometimes, that's not the easiest thing to make happen. Dogs that are microchipped, sometimes that takes a little bit of research, contacting the agency that implanted the microchip and kind of doing a check back in history, finding out who gave the dog to whom and whatnot, just to get a good address, even to send a letter to. So, the staff is very dedicated to trying to see those things through to try to get people reunited with their dogs. Another number that we are quite proud of, and I think reflects in how we have a very caring staff and caring community, is the 148 adoptions and 119 rescue transfers. We have a staff that cares deeply about getting dogs into the right adoptive homes, and we have a community that's willing to come to a shelter to look for dogs, to bring into their homes. And a little bit about the rescue transfers, we've worked hard and spent a lot of time trying to learn about the rescues in our community and learn what their resources are, what they can do specifically to help specific dogs. Our staff is very good at figuring out what dogs have special needs, behaviorally, medically, scared dogs that aren't sheltering well, and just getting them into the right rescue. So, we've worked with rescues to find the ones that can give that little extra bit of TLC, can provide a foster home, so that a dog that's really scared in the shelter can get out of that shelter environment, and they might not otherwise be an adoptable dog if that couldn't happen. So, we really value those partnerships with our rescues. The number listed below that, 1,438 dog officer responses or requests. So, that is officers making contact with the community, being out in the community, and requests from the public investigating dog bites, aggressive dogs, welfare concerns. In a nutshell, it's protecting people from dogs misbehaving, and also protecting dogs from people misbehaving. Volunteers. So, 3,668 hours given by 70 volunteers. That is 70 people that are willing to take time out of their day to come to our shelter and look after our dogs. In those 3,600-plus hours, there's potty walkers, people that just come just to come and take the dogs out for potty breaks outside. We have a set team, that's the socialization, enrichment, and training crew that come in and work with the dogs for that purpose. Housekeeping, and a program that is really sweet is the Read to the Dogs Program. Children can come in with their parents and sit outside a kennel and just read to the dogs and calm them and just hang out. And lastly, through this year, we've been working with Good Neighbor Vet at a microchip and vaccination clinic. So, through that, we've microchipped 263 dogs, which is a huge, it's very important to do that, as it aids in reuniting pets with people, and Sarah has a really great story to illustrate that.
Thank you, Christine. Do you want to push for the next one? So, I always come to you guys to bring a positive story, usually an adoption success, but this week, we have a great reunion story, all because of the microchips, and our shelter is really proud of this success story. So, Odie came to the shelter, and we scanned his microchip to contact the name that was on it. Shelter staff gave a call to the number that was provided, and the woman was very surprised because she has not seen Odie in three years. So, she came into the shelter, came to see her dog, and as I was chatting with one of the shelter staff that was there to see the reunion, she said she could just see the wave of realization come over that little dog as its previous owner walked up to the kennel and realized that it was going home with its original owner. So, those kind of stories are really exciting around the shelter. We posted it on social media and got quite a bit of shares, likes, all that kind of stuff, and a little bit of press from the community as well, doing some interviews on the radio. So, we're always really proud and really excited once we can reunite those dogs with their owners and all the importance that goes into microchipping. Some other updates I have for you all. A lot of these faces, well, probably, hopefully, all of them are familiar to you. This is a collection of dogs that you all have featured throughout the year for our 2017 Dogs of the Week, and I want to thank you for featuring your dogs and continuing to feature them. Some updates I have for you. You can see Scott in the very top, my left corner, the German Shepherd. So, he came in with some urinary problems, he was dribbling, and the Clackamas Dogs Foundation was able to pay for additional x-rays for him, find out that he had bladder stones that were about this big. So, we were able to get him some surgery, and then he was transferred to a German Shepherd specific rescue, and they worked with him in getting him to the right home. In the middle, we have Princess Buttercup. She was personally one of my favorite dogs, so of course, I'm going to mention her, and she ended up being adopted by one of our dedicated volunteers, getting a great home. Now she lives on five acres. It's just her and her mom and dad, so she really came to a great life, and we get continual updates about her. Zoe, at the very top, she was featured in the Oregonian. She had a spread in the living section with a big picture, her bio, all that kind of good stuff, and then she ended up being adopted to a really great home as well. They saw the picture and fell in love with her and came right on into Adopter. Last but not least, we have Roy in the very bottom, right there. Hopefully, most of you remember, he was just featured last week, and he has already been adopted to his new home as well. So, lots of great successes for all the dogs that you guys were promoting. So, as always, we want to thank you for inviting us to come here and speak, share our stories, and promoting our dogs. We're going to leave you with Kiwi for our final dog of 2017. Kiwi's a great dog, super cute, lovable, ready to be trained, and only 11 months old, looking for that forever home. So, thank you again for having us, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Martha.
So, I looked at Kiwi, but what about Spudley?
Spudley's there, too.
Yeah, Spudley's a little beagle. What's Spudley's story? Just out of, just a stray, or?
I believe Spudley was surrendered by his owner, if I'm not mistaken. He did have an eye surgery recently. I think he's actually going back to the vet this morning to have a recheck on that eye surgery. He had a cherry eye in one eye. Great friendly little dog.
Yeah.
Kind of quiet beagle.
So, when can I take, when can I see him, then?
You can come on down to the shelter.
Yeah, I know, but he's not there today, then, right?
He's not there this morning. He'll be back this afternoon, once he's back from the vet.
Looking to adopt?
Yeah, I am. I'm actually, and he looks really cute. But I have another big dog, who was one of your rescued dogs. I've got a lab Great Dane, so they'd have to
Yeah, you'd want them to meet.
Okay. Don't tell the staff, they told, they told DTD not to let me have another dog. But I'll treat him well, I promise.
Ken.
Thank you. My wife and I have always done rescues rather than going to breeders and whatnot like that. So, I'm looking for a mini Aussie male or a shelty male. If they happen to show up, give me a call.
Okay.
Preferably younger dog, but that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
We'll keep an eye out, yeah.
Write that one down.
Just got to talk to Suzanne about that. I'd love to have another dog.
I have two rescue dogs, and one is a special needs dog, was abused, and I'll tell you that we got a second dog that is, I don't have favorites, but my favorite dog, and they get along really well, and that, the second dog really saved that first dog, because, you know, when we first got it, I mean, it snapped at me, ran away one night, and it was, but we've had Franny for quite a while. Her name prior to that was Freeway.
Oh, no.
Idea what she's to do. Paul.
I just want to say, so my, you know, my wife likes cats, so we have a cat that we adopted, and it's about two years old, and she's adjusting fine. We had, we have had cats in the past, we had to put our cat down and our dog down, but it's always good that you have a cat and dogs, to get them when they're young, so they can grow up together, and they're far more patient with each other, but we have had some incompatibility with, you know, either bringing a second cat or a new dog into an environment, and so it doesn't always work out.
You don't have an excuse, Paul.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just saying, that you always want to make sure they're compatible. Dogs are a lot easier, they get along far better with one another than two cats or introducing a new cat to an environment.
That is for sure.
And the recent analysis was that dogs are smarter than cats, just so you know.
I did see that.
Don't go down that road, Jim. Trust me, trust me, that'll get you in trouble.
There was an analysis that dogs are smarter.
And I could tell you, cat people will argue with you on that one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're excited. I mean, I think we thought of doing this about two years ago, or
Yeah, you did it, Jim.
Us, you know, featuring dogs, and I think it's been very successful.
It's a great program. Appreciate all the good work you do.
Thank you very much.
And the volunteers.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, what's up next to Citizen Communication? We have two. Brainer Bower and Les Poole.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Brainer Bower from the Redland community. Topic is the speed zone issue. You're all familiar that, you know, the state has looked at this to some degree, it's worked on, been worked on with the traffic engineers, and there's a proposal for 40 miles an hour, which I think all of you have taken a look at, and I've asked to have it appealed to the state, and I think it's appropriate. I think the 35 is the common sense path, and it should be appealed, so. But, you know, my position on it, I'm just reiterating that, you know. We've got a new year ahead of us, you know, Christmas, so everybody, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, and hopefully, you know, we can pray that there's no more serious accidents. We did have one a couple of months ago, which was with a smaller, it was a 3,000-pound vehicle, where somebody just, I mean, it's largely people not having lights on and somebody spacing out and just literally pulling in front of somebody, you know, particularly there's, there's a lot to pay attention to, you know. Coincidentally, they were all black vehicles, but those are things we can't control, you know, the speed is something we can. The other topic is, and I suppose this is the core of what I'd like to ask you to consider, is, is there a way, as we move into this new year, for the community to be, and myself, to be part of a working solution dialogue? You know, there's proposals for roundabouts and obviously, engineering solutions, you know, I expected it to be a path of looking at more engineering solutions than simply trying a lower speed, and our traffic engineering group is focusing on those paths, and, I mean, I'll throw out an example. Some time ago, the dental office just down the street wanted to do a remodel, rework of their property for expanding their dental practice, and they could only do that if they gave up, gave up their access to Redland Road and somehow acquired access through a neighboring property to come and access through Fisher's Mill Road. You know, it's, you know, that kind of an approach is egregious, so I'm hoping that we can find a path where as we look at all the possible things we can do and what Redland evolves into, that it can be a vibrant and really positive thing that not only preserves its history and its heritage and the character, you know, but still addresses these topics as traffic gets higher. The alternative to just doing engineering solutions can just kind of stifle the whole community, and then we've, none of us are winning. So, I'm asking you just to think about it, and if there's a way for us to set up a meaningful, but the community, common sense community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Les.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Clackamas County. I consider him to be one of my neighbors. We're all neighbors, and that's why I say I'm from Clackamas County. And I try and speak about things that matter, and over and over and over, I talk about our roads, and here, while this isn't a situation that's simple in Redland, here's a gentleman that repeatedly comes forth because people are being hurt out there. It's right at the corner of Redland and Fisher Mills Road where the store is. The traffic is growing. People are moving up to Malala Estacada and the suburban communities for affordability and because it's against the law to have a backyard in this area anymore. So, we have a lot of commuting, we have a lot of traffic problems, we have maintenance issues that are scary, and I invite anyone to go back and pick a day this year, pick it any Thursday, out of the BCC page, go to the BCC webpage, pick out a Thursday meeting and click on a video, you'll probably see me here. And the number of times that I've talked about the effect of traffic, the way Clackamas County literally got hosed in the transportation bill, and, and obviously, my concerns about tolling and how that would really work and the effects on the side streets and where the money would go have been reiterated over and over. And if we can't change the speed limit, then we're not going to get 205 done. I know I'm mixing apples and oranges, but I'm trying to make a point, and as the, as the New Year comes along, I and hopefully others are going to do everything we can to get commerce and traffic moving, and that we get 205 funded some way, hopefully, other than tolling. I called yesterday to the office here, I was very pleased to see that a letter was sent to Metro, well-written and well-done, and hopefully, we'll hear some comments about that, but that letter basically says, why would we toll 205 and not widen the bottleneck between Stafford Road and Oregon City? So, I want to thank the county and the staff and the Commission for putting that together. Last thing I'd mention is that there was an article about the budget in the Clackamas Review, and I didn't particularly read it, but I noticed there was a sub-headline that over the last 10 years, we have 35,000 new people in Clackamas County. And that caught me because how many, how many new jobs do we have in Clackamas County? Great question for Paul. How many new jobs do we have in the county over the last 10 years for the 35,000 that have moved here? I'm not trying to give you a trick question or a hard time, I'm just trying to put things in perspective, and, and hopefully, well, somebody will, will come up with an answer after the first of the year, or I'll have to get off my rear end and do it myself, but the issue is with people commuting elsewhere for jobs and commerce being stymied on 205 and our, our smaller roads being overloaded, it's only getting worse. So, let's all be safe out there over the holidays, and when you're stuck in traffic, think of Les Poole, and certainly have a great holiday everyone.
Are you sure you want that?
Blame Les, I think that's, that's the message, right?
So, we met with Malala today. 90% of their residents leave town to go to work. 90%. Clackamas County, 70% leave the county to go to work. Yes, we do need new jobs. Part of that, and Paul's been talking about this for years, Sunrise Phase 2 will open up lots of employment land. We have a group that's, well, the, actually, the EDC, we talked about meeting with them to look at industrial land and the tide of transportation. We've got a long way to go. I mean, how many years on Sunrise?
Thirty, will you be 38 in 2018?
38 years, and however, Phase 1 was one of the first projects in how many years?
37.
It was the first, first road project in over 30 years in the region, first new road, first new highway.
That's amazing.
I think that was the stat that ODOT used.
And I think that Redland Road is a ODOT road, right? No, it's a county road?
No, it's a county road. I mean, the ODOT involvement, as far as I understand, is strictly because they oversee consistency of speeds throughout the state of Oregon.
I dealt with Lake Road when I was mayor, trying to lower the speed on Lake Road was, was challenging. I think we did get 35 or 30 in some areas, but also, the legislature had some rules, changes in school zones, which, which helped on Lake Road, but I always say that logic in government, there's no such thing, so we'll work on.
I would like to think, although I'm kind of naive, that we can
We do have a safety committee, though, that, that you might want to look at if an opening comes up, we'd love to have you, and we'll watch for that for you if I
It's hard for me to make the time, I'll certainly try.
Okay, great.
It's, it's been a difficult process to step out and try to affect some change after all this time, and it's, and, you know, and some of these things I just brought up, I'm not familiar with, but, you know, it, you know, we do have a lot of traffic coming through that's not from our area, that's sporadic, you know, that affects it, you know, we, we know about the Hennessy Road, there's a lot of components to this section, and then we talk about jobs now. Gosh, you know, I brought up the dental office thing, they want to do an expansion, they can't do it because, you know, our traffic engineering says, well, hey, you're going to lose your access to the road, you know. You know, originally, at the station that I run, they were going to do a more major expansion, and traffic engineering says, oh, well, we got to, you got to do this and this, and so they can't do it, you know. I've, I control some additional property there that, it's not about the dollars, to me, I'd like it to be meaningful for the community. Part of this dialogue would be, okay, what, what can we do that, I mean, it generates jobs, too. It's commercial land, so, I mean, how can it fit into an intelligent road structure, road idea-making process? And if we have too much central control on, on decisions on roads, I, I think we need a broader
All right.
We may not agree at this point, but I, I come from a different perspective, maybe. Thank you.
All right, well, I appreciate you coming today. Thanks. And next up
By the way, could I just say something?
Oh, yeah.
Real quickly, I want, I want to wish everyone a really good New Year. As you can tell, this gentleman, myself, others come to you, it's not personal. Hopefully, no one thinks I'm trying to ask quick, quick little gotcha questions when I'm up here. If people come up here and start doing that, I'll be the first one to call them out, you know. The reason I say this is that we have a dialogue here that I and others fought real hard to create. You won't see the response or the communication in most places, and that's near and dear to us, and as long as that continues, things go better. No matter how bad they get, they won't get as bad as they would if we're not communicating. So, I appreciate it, and again, let's all have a nice break, because January's going to be here, and who knows what's coming. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, and
Oh, Ken, what did I say?
Les, if you would contact EDC, there's a member of that committee that does workforce statistics, for lack of a better term, whose name escapes me at the moment.
Lynn Wallace?
Lynn Wallace, yes. And get her name and number, Lynn Wallace. EDC will have that information, you can get that statistical information from her. If there's anybody that's going to have it, Lynn will have it.
I just want to add one of the problems with that, and Paul's mentioned it, every time you work one hour, you're employed, and so the statistics are a little, you know, hard to
Yeah, you look at the full-time job, the hours, and discern what is a part-time job versus what is a full-time job, because you can have twice as many jobs and still have less than full-time job repla, it's, yeah, math is full-time jobs.
Lynn can get you that information in terms of the breakdown and everything, so that's what she does.
So, we're assigning you to get that answer?
I was just going to say along that, Ryan, thank you for allowing us to communicate with simply filling out a card and coming in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, this, looks like Pacific. Your first name's Pacific, huh? Come on up. And this is one of my favorite subjects, net neutrality, something that
And this is one of my favorite subjects, net neutrality, something that we're going to have a lot of conversations about in 2018. So thank you for joining us. Please, uh, tell us where you live. You don't have to give the address as the gentleman.
I live just outside Lake Oswego, um, uh, near the highway, uh, the I-5. I'm here today because the FCC recently repealed net neutrality and I've already sent your commission a few emails regarding the subject, but I wanted to come in person to make sure I, I made clear that this is very important to me and everyone else at my high school. I'm a junior in a high school, by the way.
We're still waiting for that email. They slowed it down.
Ah.
Good, Jim.
I would like to request that the commission create legislation protecting net neutrality in the county. Specifically, I want net neutrality that guarantees county citizens have an equal version of the internet. You should not have to pay extra money to access specific websites or access them at a greater speed than everyone else. I, I really want you to protect citizens' inalienable rights to a, a free and open internet.
Great. And, uh, we feel the same, but I don't know that the county has any actual control, but we're looking at some ideas. Kiss, Ken.
I was going to suggest that this young man turn around and look at the guy at the back of the room with the blue shirt on. Please go have a conversation with that gentleman, would you? He is one of our technical folks and, uh, he may be able to, may be able to share some information with you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I do have one question before you go, and that is, if you could just state for the, for people that are watching this, um, and might watch this in the future, um, status quo is net neutrality or not? For everyone's edification.
What?
Is, is the status quo net neutrality?
I'm not sure what that means.
My question, so internet access as it is today for all of us, you would define that as net neutrality?
The FCC only just repealed the law. The companies have not taken action just yet. So what we have right now is net neutrality, but that's going to go away really quickly if we don't act.
Yeah, that's my point. I, I think a lot of people don't understand that the status quo today is really what we're saying, really. We're advocating for the status quo.
Yes.
That's right.
Which basically means that you can't slow down the information because you're not paying a higher fee. All right. Great. Thank you all for coming and commenting and we're on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the consent agenda today, under Health, Housing and Human Services, we have approval of agreement number 17 dash 18515 with Ride Connection Inc. to provide funding for vehicle maintenance of Ride Connections owned vehicles operated by community-based Clackamas County Transportation Consortium members. Approval of agreement number 17 dash 18529 with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by volunteer drivers under the Ride Together and Vet Drive Vets Program. Approval of an agency services contract with Northwest Housing Alternatives for Warming Center Services. Approval of sub-recipient grant agreement with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for Warming Center Services. Approval of amendment number one to the service agreement with Passport to Languages, partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for interpretive services for the Clackamas County Health Centers Division patients. Approval of amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Community Corrections to provide behavioral health services to community corrections consumers. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of amendment to the 2016, 2017 intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the fiscal year 2017, 2018 annual waste reduction and recycle at-work program. A board order approving the subcontract between Bliss Sanitary Service and Hoodview Disposal and Recycling for Dropbox Services. And a board order approving the transfer of solid waste collection franchise held by Meldane Sanitary Service to Hoodview Disposal and Recycling, Inc. Under our Finance Department, approval of amendment number 10 of the contract documents with Earthworks Landscape Service for landscape maintenance services for Clackamas County. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under our Disaster Management Department, approval of fiscal year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the state of Oregon. Under Technology Services, approval to purchase Microsoft enterprise licenses from SHI International. And under our Development Agency, approval of a contract with Tapini, Inc. for construction of the Boyer Road Extension Project. And consent to assignment of ownership interest in a portion on the Clackamas Town Center property from GDP slash TRS LLC and Clackamas Mall to Dakota Legacy Group LLC. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Great. Uh, does any member want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Brief comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
It was good to see the contracts and therefore dealing with the people that are going to need shelter and that are homeless this, uh, this season. Appreciate that that is in there and that we're acting on it as quickly as we are. And I'd like to commend our Commissioner, um, Fisher for, um, her forethought in terms of the emergency declaration on that subject. So thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Apostate. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. And next we're on to deputy administrator updates.
Well, I have, uh, several great updates for you to end out this year, our last business meeting. Um, thanks to the diligent work of the housing, uh, housing authority, staff has officially approved the rental assistance demonstration transactions for Hillside Manor and Park. So this is the first step in moving to a model that's going to enable us to rehabilitate and co-, and completely upgrade existing housing, ensuring affordable housing will be available in our community for decades to come. Also, recently county road maintenance crews improved the roadway around the railroad crossing on Jennifer Street. And area resident Jeff Michael expressed his appreciation in an email and he said, "I would like to thank everyone in the transportation department who had a hand in the repairs to the railroad crossings on southeast Jennifer Street. Not only were they an inconvenience, but they were becoming dangerous. I know Clackamas County is very spread out and the weather doesn't always cooperate with paving, but I am very pleased with all of you and wanted you to know." Additionally, transportation maintenance has been preparing for winter weather for months. Trucks and equipment used for winter response events have been checked. Vehicles, equipment and stockpiles of ice prevention materials have been staged at 18 strategic locations around the county, including a total of 80,000 gallons of magnesium chloride to help prevent ice from sticking to the road at three key locations. So our team is ready, ready to respond when wind, winter weather sets in. And here's a final good news story about how the training we offer to our employees in CPR saved life. Jason Kemrick is an aquatic and recreation supervisor and he recently received this Facebook message from a former coworker. "Jason, I don't know if you've heard, but my son is seven weeks old now. He had heart surgery and has only been out of the hospital about two weeks. Today he went into cardiac arrest and I had to do CPR and I remembered all of the things you said in trainings. The doctor said I saved my son's life because I did the CPR so well. I just want to thank you for all that training because if it hadn't been drilled into me so much over all those years, I don't know if I would have been able to do it today and remain so calm." So what a great outcome that was. So in closing, I'd like to, in the spirit of the season, offer happy holidays to you commissioners and to our county staff and to all the public. We are proud to serve every day.
Thank you very much. First up, Paul Savas.
Yes, um, well, first thing I want to say, this is, I think, maybe the last business meeting of the year and, um, it was my third rotation here as the vice chair, uh, but I think it was actually the only year in which I actually, that was unencumbered, if you will, and actually was able to perform my duties as such. So I want to thank the board and the chair for, um, allowing that actually to take place as it should, um, versus the other two cycles in which it was, again, kind of complicated. So I think it's been great. I'm honored to, to, to serve in that capacity. I know that last year about this time, we were hoping to have the veteran shelter thing, um, set up and ready to go. And, uh, it's been, uh, because of our attempt to, uh, actually have this within the code, a unique, uh, structure in the state, um, and having the land use approvals and all of that, um, we had somewhat delayed, but by virtue of the emergency ordinance and the fact that we've been very aggressive on making sure we are warming, warming shelters are open and ready to go, we are be able to accommodate, um, those needs, um, in the worst of weather. So, uh, we're hoping to have that, um, in place as soon as possible. I know it's something we all wanted to work on. What was the other thing I was going to say? I appreciate the comments on transportation, um, and I want to thank, we sent two letters out this week. Uh, we've been talking about that, one on the tolling, uh, which we discussed, uh, at length and one on the new transit monies that are, um, being discussed. It is, um, and the numbers, when you hear, for example, even today came up that 90% of the mayor of Malala stated 90% of their community moves through the region out to go to work every day. And of course, they're probably going all over the region. We don't know where exactly that. And that's the study we want to do. Where are those people going? And, uh, part of the analysis that we asked for in the letter is, uh, both where are we underserved and where are, are they going and how can we analyze that? This new money is specifically trying to help the riders, uh, who use transit in the state. This is not just about Trimate or anywhere else, but through the state, how they, to, to better enable services for them. Interestingly enough, obviously, is that Clackamas County and the region has more transit agencies than any other county in the, in the metro region. We have six agencies, uh, that provide transit and Trimate's one of those, but Trimate doesn't go to Malala. Uh, Trimate doesn't go to Sandy. Uh, Trimate doesn't go to Canby and they don't go really into Wilsonville because those will have separate agencies. And Malala's one of those as well. So we need to talk about connectivity so those people can actually, uh, commute through there, who, those who don't, can't afford a car. But the point of the matter is, as we transition into, um, looking at more employment lands and transition, hopefully to have a little bit more, less of a bedroom community where people are going to work and more industry in the county, perhaps people can live closer to home or closer to work and live in the same county and the same area without exacerbating our transportation needs. And that's the balance we're really trying to strike. So again, these transit monies in the letter, I think we'll get to that point and figure out where we're, where the region is less served, um, where we're underserved. And, um, I, my hope is that we get some of that, uh, a greater share of those monies for our rural areas and areas that are underserved, um, as well as, uh, monies in the region and get service even in the urban areas as well. So I, uh, just want to also wish everyone a safe holiday. I know that, uh, this is the time of year where weather conditions get cold and roads get slippery. My sister, um, decided to go over the Sisikew Pass. Hope she, hopefully she made it well. I mean, she's going to come back over right around the time when the next cold weather comes. So I just wish everyone a safe holiday season and I wish everyone the best with their families and friends. So, um, that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Continue to work on my pet project of cross laminated timber, obviously. Um, meet with constituents and CPOs and had the privilege of representing our board on behalf of the chair at the Forest Trust Lands Meeting the other day. And I'm going to leave it at that and keep it short and sweet, uh, because I'm sure people have things to do before the holidays start and I'm going to go to the dog. This is Kiwi. She is a one and a, or one to two-year-old Australian cattle dog healer mix. She's a sweet, happy, active girl. I would benefit so much from going home with an active family who would love to take her on fun-filled doggy adventures. Going on your daily run? She'd love to go. You need a hiking partner? It could be her. She wants to be the best canine citizen she can be and would love a new family to help teach her all the ways of being the best behaved girl. She'd love her new home to have no cats, kids over nine, and maybe even some breed experience. If there are already dogs at home, bring them to the shelter to meet her so we can make sure they'll be great friends. She's ready to meet my forever person people, so come into Clackamas County Dog Services to meet her today. For more information about Kiwi and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And on that note, Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Which, uh, which one of you guys write this? Any of you? No?
Well, thanks for, for great scripts.
All right. Well, next up is Sonia.
So happy holidays. It's time for connecting to community and connecting to family. I do want to share that I had a wonderful afternoon with Les Poole driving around Clackamas County, learning really in detail sort of the heart of where his concerns are. We drove out to Colton. We went by where solar panels are being installed. He talked for, I think I got a whole hour and a half of education and it was wonderful. So thankful so much for our community, for the partners in our community and for those citizens that reach out and talk to us. And then also thinking about family, on my mind and heart has been the announcement that family care is going to be closing. We have 25,000 families in Clackamas County that are being redirected to other services. It's made me very nervous to think about some of our most vulnerable folks just simply going through a transition and what that means. The fear of will I have my doctor? Will I be able to see my therapist? What will this mean for me, for my family, for my children? So appreciative of our staff keeping us up to date and thank you, Laurel, while Don Crupp has been out, making sure that we are up to date all the time on what is happening and to just monitor. And for the folks out there, just know that your county commission is aware and that we care and that we are on top of things for whatever we can do to make sure that the transition for our residents is as seamless as possible. And then along the lines with community, there are two people on the audience that I want to mention today. I have had the wonderful blessing of having some interns work with me. They have been amazing, going with me to events, keeping track of citizen concerns, writing up issues, writing up staff reports. And so I want to do a shout out to Adam Marl, who's here. Adam, if you could wave. So Adam is a senior at Oregon City High School. He is just amazing. I have to say, he's looking at all kinds of things for his future. And one thing he's very much considering is becoming an attorney. And so I am working really hard to do as many connections I can for him right now so that if he goes through, finishes colleges, becomes an attorney, wherever he goes in his education, he comes right back here to Clackamas County. And so best and brightest of our young people. And then I want to also recognize Noah Kersenhauser, who's back there. Um, Noah is a 17-year-old community college student, Clackamas Community College. He has been going to community college for a couple of years now. He will be finishing up and looking to transfer to Portland State. The world is his oyster and he is very interested in public policy, in government, in possibly law, politics. And I can tell you, there isn't anybody that I've seen who can write up a staff report as good as Noah. And Drenda, my policy coordinator, has said, wow, I really like what Noah's doing. It makes my job so much easier. So thank you to both of these young men and wishing you a wonderful, um, holiday season.
Great. But anyone considering law, please come and see me, see if I can talk you out of it. Mr. Schrader.
Yeah, I'm here today to wish everybody a really wonderful holiday and how grateful I am to be a county commissioner because we have a county where all of our agencies excel. Everything from what we do with our human service delivery systems. I see Barb in the, in the audience today, the head of our Department of Transportation, how they keep people safe, uh, how they work with our roads. I know I see Mike there, Mike McAllister of Planning. And, uh, Mike's the guy in charge of all that permitting and, uh, everything else that we need to do to make sure that the county remains livable. I want to thank Laurel and Kevin. Uh, thanks for filling in for Don. And Kevin, thank you. You're a delight to come into every morning because you're just a wonderful young man and I'm so glad that you have picked county service as part of, of what you do. Uh, there is never a dull moment in this job. There's always something. Thank you for the dog control people. I will try and come by and see Spudley today, but we'll, we'll see how that, how that works. And I'm really grateful, not only for my own colleagues here and some of the folks I mentioned, um, I mean, code enforcement, economic development, tourism, everything we do in this county is really, it really knocks it out of the ballpark. But I'm also really grateful to be associated with counties across the state. And, um, I talked with one of Sonia's, um, and Ken's colleagues, Jim Doherty, the other day, because he is in line to, uh, take on leadership for the whole association of Oregon counties. So we talked about that, what that means for membership, what that means not only for our individual counties, but counties across the state. And I think about this a lot because there has been a lot of political turbulence this past year. It's been a really difficult time for the country in many ways, nationally, internationally. And what really has occurred to me And what really has occurred to me is that counties and cities really are the stabilizers in this great country. If we have a Cascadian event, for example, or if the zombie acaucolus happens, you know, it's really local governments, it's local governments that are going to be the mainstay and the stability of how we govern, uh, our folks here in this country. Yes, we need our legislature. Yes, I, I, I think we need the federal government in some ways, but I think that we have been the grand stabilizers across the state and across this country, and for that, um, I'm very grateful. Uh, I thank our staff for the warming shelters. They've done a wonderful job. We didn't have much capacity, and they worked extremely hard to get us up, uh, to capacity, so people who are less fortunate won't be freezing to death out on the streets. And I just am grateful for my family. My daughter's coming out. I'll get to see my grandchildren, and, um, that's the most wonderful thing for me that's gonna be happening, um, this holiday. So, with that, Merry Christmas, everybody, and I'm gonna hand arts and culture to Paul or Jim or somebody else. How about you do it, Paul?
Here, let's go.
Oh, my goodness. Arts and culture activities in the county. The Spiral Gallery Holiday Show. Shop local and support your neighborhood artists. A special holiday show featuring gifts under one hundred dollars for you to choose for that special person on your list. The show will run for the whole month of December, Wednesday through Saturday, December twentieth through the twenty-third, eleven AM to six PM at the Spiral Gallery in Estacada. And then the Arts Council of Lake Oswego Holiday Marketplace. A holiday marketplace showcases work, including fine art, wood, ceramics, jewelry, glass, handmade gifts, ornaments, textiles, and accessories, a staple of the holiday season. Wednesday and Saturday, December twentieth and twenty-third, eleven AM to six PM. Thursday and Friday, December twenty-first and twenty-second, eleven AM to seven PM at Five One Zero Museum and Art Space in Lake Oswego. For more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org.
Great. Thank you very much. So, as far as becoming a lawyer, um, I think you can be replaced by a computer.[1392.58][1392.58](laughing). Uh, but, you know, I, there's a lot of things in this county...
Mr. Chair, you're a bit out of order.
(laughing).
How do I interpret that?
Oh, yeah.
You were just told you were being out of order.
Oh.
And I'm gonna object here in a minute.
Uh, but there are a lot of great opportunities here at the county. In case you don't know it, we're an aging population. We have a lot of people retiring. I don't know anyone in here who's aging, but we do have somebody in here who's retiring. Barb Cartmill over there is retiring, and, and we have some other people retiring today. We have a, a, a bunch of people in the next few years that'll be retiring. Some of that has been due to per, changes in pers. And, uh, so, every month, we do an employee recognition lunch, and we hear what people do for the county and do for the citizens. Uh, every five years, they come, so five, ten, twenty, thirty. We've had some thirties, been with the county for thirty years, and, uh, it's just amazing, uh, the great work that they do. And, um, of course, I want to thank all those folks for the hard work that they provide in, uh, for the citizens of Clackamas County and, uh, others, such as Barb and others who are retiring, and wish them, um, long life and success and fun, and, uh, um, it's really important that, um, you know, that you, uh, enjoy, I mean, a lot of people, some people leave here unhappy with their careers. Uh, some people leave here excited about what's in the future, but there's a ton of opportunity out there in the county. A lot of, I mean, seventy people, was it volunteered for, no, for the dog services? Seventy? Uh, th- uh, three thousand something hours? Uh, there's a lot of, uh, volunteer opportunity, too. Um, so, um, I, I wanted to comment a little bit on the tolling letter. I thought it was inspirational. That letter was really good. So, you did a great job along with staff that helped you. I mean, after I read it, I thought, wow, that's, that's kind of inspirational. Um, housing study, you know, uh, one of our problems is, uh, it's a problem all over the place, is housing studies, uh, what's our need, a need assessment? And we are looking at doing that countywide with the help of our cities. Uh, I-205 capacity, I think there's a, there, there is a, uh, one of the biggest problems with what we're discussing about I-205 and tolling is it's, I don't have a problem with tolling, but tolling ought to be spent specifically, uh, in areas like I-205 where we only have two lanes, uh, to increase capacity. There's also a discussion about, um, changing driving habits, but I don't know. A lot of people who live, uh, minimum wage jo, or work minimum wage jobs don't have a choice what time they drive. So, there's a huge impact on people like that, so that's negative. But we need to balance the system at least before we start saying, "We're gonna change your driving habits." So, that's a big problem. You know, the other thing we talked about even a little bit today with Malala is, in the old days, uh, sewage treatment plant, the, the federal government paid a hundred percent or ninety percent. Uh, over the years, it's gone to seventy percent, uh, fifty percent, and thirty percent, and no money, which is what I think could hap, is like now. Uh, we pay a lot of taxes, go to the federal government. Uh, a long time ago, I said that we can no longer depend on the help of the federal government or the state government. We have to do it ourselves, and, uh, and I think at the county, we're doing that. We're, we're taking the initiative. Um, one thing I was happy about is the transportation package that gave us some money to spend in the future. The challenge of that is having the employees to do it. I mean, I'm doing a home remodel, supposed to start in July. I had a five-hundred-and-forty-four-dollar heating bill because I got a wall with no insulation. It's been bare since, I don't know, three months?
At least.
Because I can't get the contractor to come in and do the work that they're supposed to do, and the county did a great job, and one of the complaints was that I, they hadn't turned in a permit applic, I mean, the county was holding up the permit application. I found out that they hadn't even put it in. So, I mean, we have, there's a lot of need in construction work. There's all, all kinds of things that, uh, you know, computers won't be able to replace you.
That's right.
And, uh, the trades industry, I mean, there's, uh, um, uh, union service, electrical engineer, electrical, uh, home construction, concrete, iron, all those things. So, there's a lot of opportunity there, too, and you don't have to go to college for four years or six years or whatever you do, but, uh, please look at, uh, you know, working with your hands. Uh, I, I did most of that most of my life, and I really enjoyed it. But with that, I'd just like to wish everybody, uh, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and thank, uh, the employees here at Clackamas County for the wonderful work they do, and look forward to an even better year in 2018. So, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.[1764.61][1764.61](applause).[1765.61][1765.61](music)